There she is. Okay. Here you are.
Hi, Rupal. Are you there, Rupal?
Yes, now I am.
Oh, okay, good. I can see. Good, good.
And can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can hear you. So this is Rupal Nave. She's a physical therapist for thirty years. And she has been giving out her lot of sessions and she's gonna give us one of the her sessions today. So all on your court, Rupal, go ahead.
Thank you, Sajil. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. You know, it's always nice to talk about Mudra. I love it. And also, you know, little bit of my physical therapy experience that I can share with everybody. It's really gives me a joy to just, you know, and then I meet people. And I see that they are trying to do some of the things I've said. So, you know, it's really nice. So today, you already have been teaching yoga and breathing. So today I'm just going to shed some light on stretching exercise and do's and don'ts of it. Nutritionals, you know, supplements that you should be taking, not really supplements, but like the hydration part. That I'm gonna talk about it. And then I'm gonna give little introduction to Mudra. And Mudra is also like the other part of yoga, which is not very famous, but it's kind of becoming mainstream now. I see there are classes offered. I actually have a class on Udemy that I just posted for people to, you know, kind of get some knowledge if they want to. So let me start with talking about Mudras. So in Mudras, what you're doing is you're using your hands to create a position. And that kind of connects different parts of the elements. You know, so if you've never heard, then the five fingers represent five elements.
This meeting is being recorded.
Can you all make sure your audios are muted? Thank you. Go ahead, Rupal, go ahead.
Okay, so five fingers represent five elements. So the thumb is the one that is fire. The little finger is water. The, you know, the ring finger is earth. This is space. And this is air. So you know, every time like you hear, when I was growing up, I was hearing like older people, like my grandparents would say, oh, I've got a lot of gas or something like that. So the yu part, the digestion that, you know, needs that air element balanced. So when you do this Mudra, so you connect the thumb and the index finger. That means you're connecting the yu. So you kind of keep it in balance. And so also you are helping focus attention. You've seen this in yoga mudras most of the times. And then if you just modify it a little and you bend your index finger. And you touch the top, the tip of your thumb. Then this Mudra helps people who have arthritis, rheumatism, gout. So, you know, it's a simple thing. If you look at it, you, all you're doing is holding a position. In the beginning, when somebody's trying to do, you should try to hold both sides equally, sit in a straight position or even lying down. Or even if you're walking, you can do it, but just make sure yours, you know, you're even. It's not like you're sitting sideways and you're trying to do it or you're sleeping sideways into it. So this is one of a good thing, you know, and a lot of people can benefit from doing this. And every day if you do five minutes, you know, three times a day, or even if you do just one or two times a day. It will, in thirty days, it will add up and you will see a difference in your joint space. You will feel that the joints don't feel as stiff. You know, you've taken care of some of the air element or the gas trapped in your digestion digestive tract. So this is very good. So we are already used to this. We've seen this, you know, all the time in yoga and focus attention. Gnanamudra, mudra of knowledge. And you just modify it a little and you bend your index finger and touched up tip of your thumb. And this can, you know, can help with lot of the arthritic problem. The second one is this finger with the space. So this is one of the also same thing you can bend and touch the tip of the thumb. And this one can help with ear problems. Now, in acute ear problems, if somebody has ear pain or a lot of ear infections or something like that, you hold it. Now, this one in particular, you just have to do it till pain is gone. So if you're holding it in two minutes, the ear pain is gone, you have to let go of it. It's not one of those things where you hold it for five or ten or fifteen minutes. So when you do this, the ear pain goes away in three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, you let go of the Mudra. And I am just giving brief overview today. If anybody's ever interested, I have, you know, presentation that I can share with Sajil and then you guys can get it from her. The third one is the earth. So this one, if you hold it, just the tips together. Or if you do, you know, the bend and hold it like, both of them help with hormonal balance, thyroid gland. And it also helps with metabolic rate. So some people who are really weak, if they do this, it gives them more strength. And if, you know, even if you have a weight challenge, like if you're overweight or underweight, this helps balance the weight. And when I was first doing it, different things are said about these two, but you kind of can try these. Just touch the tip of the thumb and the tip of ring finger. Hold it for five, ten minutes, do it every day for like thirty days. Anything to work, it will take about thirty to forty days. So you try this and don't really expect results right away, but you know, if you continuously do it, you'll notice a difference. The last one is for water. So if you feel dehydrated, like in summertime, if you're walking outside and things like that, or you know, kids who play sports. I'm not saying this is what they should do instead of rehydrating. But if you're really feeling dehydrated and you don't have access to water right away, you can try doing this for a little bit. So it will balance your water element. And then, you know, of course, go get water. So these are just some basic ones. One of the ones that I really like to do is after you've had a heavy meal. Usually they say, after you do yoga, or after you eat, you don't do yoga for about ninety minutes. Because your digestive system has to work to digest the food you've had. So you don't wanna, you know, cause compromise. But this is one of the thing you can always do after food. So you're connecting the two middle fingers, like the second and the ring finger. So it's like the deer head position. When you do this, this helps digestion a lot. This also helps regulate the blood sugar. So this is one of the best Mudra and you walk around like five minutes or something after you've had your food. And this helps to digest your, you know, causing, helps in digestion. And you don't feel less full after you're done. And from here, there is a modification. So you just hold the deer head and the index finger, you just go to the base of the thumb. And this helps with high blood pressure. You know, there have been times like I've read, read some articles where somebody's having like the symptoms of heart attack. And if they just hold this Mudra till the help comes, if you're able to help them get to this, then it reduces the effect of heart attack. So it's a very powerful thing. It's again, it looks very simple. Now, I have tried to, you know, research more about lung Mudra when I go hiking and stuff, I get out of breath. So I've tried to research, but I haven't really found something good that works. But one thing I did notice that when I'm walking and if I get a little short of breath, if I hold the deer head and then do this Mudra. It helps, you know, regulate my breathing, helps the circulation. So then I'm able to go a little bit further when I go hiking. Or it actually helps me, you know, recover better. So if I just stand in my position and just do this, it helps me, you know, kind of calm down my system. The heart rate comes down and then I'm able to go a little bit more. Again, don't push yourself. If you see signs of, you know, like you're exhausted, this Mudra and then trying to push yourself, that's not a good idea. But if you can do this and, you know, rest up a little bit and go a little further, but you feel good, then continue. But these are some of the things, this is so easy. It's like right there. Another thing that I learned over the time that if you forget all of these things, if you just hold all your five fingers together. And then just hold after eating, this also helps digestion. Because in everybody, the elements are off, like, you know, in my case, I might be off in my air element. Some people might be off in their space or earth or water. So if you do this, you're just connecting all the five elements and you just hold it. You know, it's nothing, you know, it's not gonna harm you, but at least it can help a little bit in the process. So these are just simple, basic Mudra that I have been trying to do for like five, six years now. And I've seen tremendous difference every time I do it regularly. There are times I don't. So, you know, we're all humans, so we fall off the thing, but it's good idea to try to do whatever you can do. So if you can't remember any of it, deer head. And this is for water. And then this one is for circulation. So if you can do any of that, that's good. And the first finger, when you do this, it helps a lot of digestive, you know, and the air element, a lot of gas. Arthritic, gout, rheumatism, things like that. So these are simple things that a lot of us have over the period of time as we age. And, you know, if you can keep this in check, you can prolong the deteriorating effect of it. So that's basically what I would say about Mudra. Other thing to do is if, you know, like take three minutes, if you really like one of these Mudras. Then you can take at night three minutes and just kind of say om while you hold the Mudra. And that really enhances the effect of the Mudra that you're trying to do or the results you're trying to gain from it. So that's about Mudra. Any questions about that or was that pretty explanatory, self-explanatory or it's okay, Sajil?
Yeah, it's good. So Rupal, man, so for the, for the heart patients, right? You hold these two, right? Just on their nails, right? Not in
Right, just the fingertips, fingertips, a little bit, yeah.
Not bend, yeah. Yeah, and then you just kind of connect the first index
Connect the first finger in the middle, in the gap here.
Okay, cool. All right.
So you're making like a zero here.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other fingers initially, when somebody's trying it out, like I have been doing it for a while. And obviously you also looks like your fingers really do very well. But some people, when they start out, their fingers want to do this. And it's okay, just rest it on something like rest on your lap or rest on a pillow or something like that. Eventually these fingers was, you know, kind of straightened out. So when you first start, if you're doing this and all the other three fingers want to go in, it's okay. You just rest it and then eventually they will straighten out because the goal is to keep them straight. So this balances out. But, you know, it's like requires a little bit of practice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now I think you all have been, all have been doing stretching exercises along with yoga.
Kunkum has one question. Go ahead, Kunkum.
The fingers, they should be together like that or spread out like this?
Fingers, try to keep it together because if you spread out, they're gonna strain. So you wanna keep it easy, you know, whatever makes it feel like relaxed. If you feel tension, that's a good thing that you said, because one of the thing I've been forgetting to tell people is when you hold something, right? And you feel like it can't hold and it's just separating, then don't hold it. That means your element is balanced. So you just try to do in most relaxed position, as relaxed as you can be. And then just let it go when you feel like you're done. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, so the next topic that I was gonna talk about is stretching. And, you know, over the period of time, I know people go to gym, people do yoga, they do Pilates. People go hiking, biking, you know, a lot of different things everybody does. But one thing that is not given very good benefit is stretching. Most people work out like five days or something like that, but they don't do stretching. So, you know, building yoga is a great thing because in that automatically you get some stretching component in that. So, you know, it's like a well-balanced exercise program. So when you do stretches, you just make sure that when you're stretching, you hold at the first place, you feel the tightness. So if somebody said, do or try and touch your toes, don't touch your toes if you can't touch your toes, but kind of reach the ankle if the first. And then the next time or the second repetition or third repetition, you might be able to reach further. So, you know, if I say, just tilt your head to the right. And if you can only do here and you feel a stretch, then you stop. If you can do full range, you do full range. So with the stretching exercise, that's like the biggest key I can give is stop when you first feel the stretch. And sometimes I see people doing rocking motion when they do stretches. So the only time a rocking motion is good is when you're doing a butterfly stretch. So in sitting, when you do the legs and you're doing the butterfly, it's okay to rock. But rest of the exercises, I highly recommend that do not rock, just hold, stretch, breathe. You know, go with the breathing in, you know, do a stretch, hold, let go, come back. So that way you won't harm any of the tissues. Because you can create micro trauma without realizing and it adds up and it causes problem later on. You know, people have hamstring strain, if they, you know, some runners will say that they have hamstring pull all the time. Or she explains things like that, it's because they haven't stretched that whole length. And if you can think about a dry plant and you try to mold it or bend it, it will break because it is not hydrated well. So make sure, you know, you hydrate well along with it. And when you do stretches, just be gentle with yourself. And if you're working out five days a week or something, at least two days, you have to give ten to fifteen minutes of stretch. If you're gonna do every day, three to five minutes of stretch is okay. So like when you first get up in the morning, bringing your leg to chest, you know, bringing your legs side to side. And it seems like a stretch that you're doing for your low back. But when you bring your right leg to your chest, you're helping the right side of the colon. When you bring left leg to the chest, you're helping the left side of the colon. When you go side to side, you're gonna gently massaging. So when, you know, if, if you have been doing yoga for a while, also you would know that when you do these motions, it's called waking up your spine. So knee to chest, bring your legs side to side, turning your head one way, legs one way. So in the morning, if that's one of the thing you can develop as a routine, takes about one and a half minute. Because each hold, you do about five seconds, you do three repetitions. So after you've done about one and a half minutes, you've kind of woken up your spine. So basically you slept all night and blood flow is kind of stagnant. And all you're doing is gently mobilizing it and you're waking up with a good start of blood flow. So it's like a on switch or reset switch for your body. So that's a good thing or even at night, if you wanna do it, because in the morning, sometimes you just have too many things happening and we don't have time to do it. So at night, if you just do that and then when you wake up, you're probably not gonna be as stiff. But for any of this to work, it has to be done consistently for at least thirty to forty days to become a habit. What will happen after that is your body is gonna like, I need to really do this stretch. It's like gonna become brushing your teeth. You're just going to do it because it feels good, right? And, you know, also I say that don't be very hard on yourself is, if, you know, if you're doing it every day. But if you miss two days because you're out on vacation or you're out somewhere, it's okay. You know, it's not that you're gonna lose the benefit of it. But stay consistent as long as, you know, you can do it. And even if it's a little thing, you don't have to really take time out of your life sometimes if you don't have it. But stretch every day, you know. I was doing a YouTube video, you know, just trying to learn different things from different people. And, you know, this woman said, you know, flexible mind, flexible body, you know, they go hand in hand. So stretching is like you're really helping your nervous system, your lymph flow. You know, you with the breathing, it incorporates everything together and makes you feel good. Your brains aren't as foggy, you know, a lot of us work in front of the computer now. You know, as a physical therapist, I, you know, have to move it up, but most of us work in front of the desk. And, you know, we're sitting a lot. So doing some just the gentle shoulder rolls while you're sitting, every couple hours taking a break. You know, doing wrist circles once in a while, you know, just letting your hand reach the opposite side, turn your head. You know, and those kind of simple things will really add up. And again, you can just take a little break from your work. If you're doing work, you know, on general ninety minutes is what I say. If you sit in a one place for ninety minutes, then you take about two minutes, either get up and walk, do some stretches, do some breathing exercise, any of that. Or look at something very distant, you know, just to help your eyes, you know, if you've been in front of the desk. So some of these things, just make it part of your life. When you make a part of your life, it really helps. You know, if you're gonna do it couple of days and say, oh, it doesn't work, that's, it is not gonna work, you know. So it's, the constant practice is very beneficial. Anything about stretching? Anyone has any
Can you give a couple of examples of your stretches?
Alright, so mostly the people, the desk worker, what I say, people who are in front of desk. Or even if you're like you're working in the kitchen a lot or something like that, basically what stretches to do, right? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
So with that, you, I say, keep your arms like at ninety degrees, elbow straight, not like extended like with lock, but elbow just straight. You circle your wrists about five times one way. And then the five times another side, like so clockwise, anti-clockwise, you have five. Then you do a prayer stretch. So, you know, we all do prayer, but we hold it like this. But then just bring your arms a little up, forearms, you know, kind of becoming parallel to the ground. So then you'll feel a little stretch here. If, you know, if you're not very tight, you might not feel anything here and that's fine. Then the next one is this, this one, almost everybody feels it. Because none of us kind of worked on this angle. We end up doing this, but we don't do this as much. So this helps stretch this muscle. When you, this area gets very tight because you're overworking it, then you have a lot of wrist problems. So when you do this stretch and keep it like that, it helps keep that area stretched out. And it doesn't create a lot of fatigue. So wrist circles, prayer, this, you know, reverse prayer, holding like that. Then touching the opposite shoulder, using your other hand on the arm. And then just kind of pull it. And if you're feeling stretchier, hold it. If you feel like you can actually turn your head to the other side, you get a little extra stretch. And then hold for one, two, three, four, five, and then you go to the other side. So you hold the opposite shoulder. And first do this, and if you feel like you can do more, then you turn your head. But you'll feel a stretch back here a little bit in the neck. That's where you feel a little. So that's good. And then doing shoulder rolls, even in sitting, just kind of doing shoulder rolls forward and backward. It's good. For the neck, I say like hold the two fingers on the top here. And then just tuck your chin in. You can use your chin and do it, but sometimes when you just do the chin, you can pull some muscle. You do here, you're gonna really get the chin tuck. Chin tuck is good because a lot of us are always doing forward head. When you do chin tuck, you allow these muscles to relax in the back. So your neck is not under so much tension. The tension headache, some people feel from the tension, the neck muscle, you know, that would reduce because you're unloading that. You're kind of giving it a little rest. Yeah, then the other one is just you hold on the opposite side of your neck and then you just stretch. And try to keep your shoulder down and, you know, Sajil, really good. So your shoulder is down. So most people, if you're tight, it will come up, but just try to see if you can rest your arm on your lap and then just stretch. And then you go to the other side. Okay, hold for one, two, three, four, five. That's basically what I say or two regular breaths, not two deep breaths, but regular breaths. If you hold, that's really good for you. Okay, so those are just basic ones. And then if you don't have any pain down the arm or tingling or numbness or things like that, then you do the neck holes. I think it's part of yoga anyway, but you just do the neck holes, but very gently. Don't try to do a full big range, but if you can do small range at first, then do small. And if you can, you know, once you stretched out, then you can do a bigger range, then that's fine. But two or three of that and just switch the angle. And that's very helpful too. So that's as far as people who, you know, are doing a lot of wrist work or hand or, you know, a lot of standing and hand work, like in the kitchen a lot work or something like or yard work or something like that. These are good things to do. As far as lower back, you know, the way I think I'm sitting in the chair, but I can't, you know, probably show the whole thing, but the house Sajil is sitting, that's completely fine too. So your hands in the, you just go forward and then bend forward. You can keep a pillow in the front, if you, you know, if you can stretch, but just kind of slide your hand, just go, Sajil, if you can slide your hand forward. And then just go lean in. You feel a stretch in the low back and the hip area and things like that. So this is in sitting, but a lot of people can't do it in sitting. So sitting in the chair, you can just go forward like that and you will feel a low back stretch. So that's okay to do that. So that's one of the thing I say. And the standing stretch, I'm gonna try to do some standing, see if it works out. I don't know if you can see it. You see some, you know, part of it. Okay. So in standing, you put your one hand on the hip. Put one hand like kind of put it by your ear and straight. And then you just kind of go side back. So when I was recently presenting, I was telling that when I used to make tea, now I don't drink tea, but when I used to drink tea, that's the time I would stand and do this. So you take about three reps. And this one you want to do like about a three reps at the same, in the same side, before you switch the side. And then you switch the side. And you just go to the side. Just again, go, if you can only go this much and you feel a stretch, stay there, the next stretch, you might be able to go a little further. And the third one, you might be able to go a little further. So that's a good one. The other one is if again, no pain down the leg or anything, you put your hands on your shoulders and you do pelvic circles. So you kind of circle. You go one way five and the other way five. You know, sometimes you'll notice that the one way is easier than the other. After you do about ten, fifteen days, you'll start noticing that they both balance out. And you feel almost, you know, they're equally moving in the same way without so much stiffness or tightness. Okay? Then the other one, you just kind of straddle your legs a little bit. And then you're going to go to the side. So your hands are still on your hips and the leg goes to the side. So it's a side lunge kind of thing. And then bend the other way. And one other thing I tell people, you know, that also helps with the back is you touch the opposite knee and the hand to the opposite knee. You bring it up. So you're kind of doing marches. Right? This gets activated, your side like oblique muscles, which are the ones that are trunk, you know, they kind of help you bend your trunk in sideways and rotational fashion. So if you clear these muscles, it helps reduce some of the low back pain, hip pain. And also if people have like mid-back or upper back pain, it helps. This also helps with digestion. So, you know, you can do about five or ten of each. And that's helpful. Is that good?
Yes.
As far as daily stretches, anything that Okay, any questions, anyone? Okay, so now we can talk a little bit about nutrition. So as far as nutrition, you know, everybody's heard in the last few years, eight glasses of water and Sajil's drinking water as we talk about it, which is good. So water is very important, you know, then you hydrate yourself. It's like that dry plant that you hydrated and it's really good. It helps, you know, shock absorption system, muscle movement, things like that. But along with water, your muscles also need some form of electrolytes. With sodium, chloride, potassium, magnesium, zinc, you know, all these things. If you don't know which, where to start, the best thing is make sure that your sodium, potassium, chloride is balanced. In the sense, you know, I, in the summertime, make a lot of lemonade. So, you know, when I tell my patients to make lemonade, all they do is put lemon in water. Or they get one of those, you know, powders, the lemonade mix and they put it. And I think it defeats the purpose in my mind is because you need to add salt and sugar. So, you know, anybody who grew up in India would know that our oral rehydration system was salt and sugar. They'll put it in water and they'll give you, if they didn't have time to go to a pharmacy and get electrolyte powder. So that's like really basic. Everybody has salt and sugar in the house and then you get lemon. And summertime I say lemonade is because in winter they ask you to add honey. And I'm not sure if it works equally well, but you can, you know, do it or you're wrong, that's fine. So lemonade, homemade lemonade is very good. One of the thing I've not heard anything bad about so far is the vitamin water. So vitamin water comes in about twenty hours water, I think. But don't do anything which has zero, you know, so I recommend that even if it's ten calorie, a little bit of sugar, it's fine. Zero, you know, doesn't do well with your body. Your body doesn't absorb the component that they bring to zero. So it's better to have little sugar than have something that does, your body doesn't agree with. You know, nowadays, everybody has a lot of allergy, you know, different things. It's just because there are a lot of added stuff. So either you make lemonade at home, you know, coconut water is good, but there are so many products in the market. I don't even know which one is probably good or not. But, you know, if you can get something you like as a coconut water product, then you, that also helps. That's the petition. You know, eating banana is probably good, but not everybody can eat banana every day. But that's one of the thing that we should put, add in your diet. Again, sometimes, you know, watermelon, you make juice of it and you put a little bit of lemon in it. And that hydrates you well. In regular water at home, if you put two slices of cucumber, then that helps with vitamin B. So things like that, you know, you can add some things, some that you like in your water and you like the taste. You just add it infused water, you know, and it's easy to do. You don't have to go buy infused water. You can just put like little fruits, like little berries in it or, I know, cucumber in it, anything that you like, you know, a little bit of mint helps, you know, just kind of vitamin C, things like that. So that's another good way to hydrate. Vitamin water is good. And, you know, there are electrolyte powders out there. So you can try, if somebody's very active and athletic and if they're going out hiking a lot, they really need to add hydration in there. So for normally, normal active activity, we say eight glasses, but people But people who are really active, they should do at least about twelve glasses. So two of those means the sixteen ounce should be at least electrolytes. You can find water out there which has electrolyte added. And that's fine too, because if you don't want to do anything fancy, then you know, you can just buy water that's electrolyte added. So any of these things will work and if you keep your hydration good, then your muscles will function better. So along with stretching and hydrating and breathing, if you add all those things right, you will have less stiffness. You know, less accent pain, you know, things like that, it really will help. There are people who forget to drink water for a while and then they'll have a lot of like little joint pains. Because now those joints need the water to absorb the shock. And you know, like the nervous system needs that. So it's a very good thing that you can do it for yourself, you know, make sure that you either have a timer for yourself to drink in the water. Because one other thing we don't drink in the water is because we all are in AC controlled environment. So we don't really feel thirsty as much, you know, so that is why we forget. So I know that's one thing I can really say that will make a big difference. If you're doing all the other things and if you add water right, it will add up. You know, otherwise you're exercising, you're eating right, you're doing a lot of things right, but you're not drinking water, it will change. And I'm saying it over and over is because it's a really big component of how your muscles need to work. And you know, see if you're lacking anywhere there, then just add that little bit more. Okay?
Question.
Alright.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question too.
Uh regarding cucumber that you mentioned in the water. Uh should be kind of put it at night, is it good like, you know, in the night to take a glass of water? Few slices of cucumber and then drink it in the morning. I was told like it's like alkaline water.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's what they say. And you know, I think in my opinion, if you can remember to do that, that's great. I usually just do it in the morning and then throughout the day somewhere I drink it. The idea is that the cucumber has to be in the water for at least more than a couple hours.
Oh.
To kind of help, right? Because it needs to infuse in there, right? So whatever works that way, if that, you know, like when I was growing up, one of the thing we used to do is raisins in the water. You know, and then drink that water in the morning. So idea was probably to soak that much to get the benefit for it to infuse. So you know, if you can remember to do it, if you, you know, really on a routine and a good discipline, then that's probably a good idea.
Okay, great.
Yes, just, uh, just one thing to say is don't keep that water for over eighteen hours.
Oh, okay.
Drink within the eighteen hours.
Got it. Great. Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, it was.
I have a question regarding the electrolytes, you know. Can we, can we use that on a regular basis or only once in a while?
Hold on one second, okay? Okay, can you hear me now? My phone is doing like, okay, can you hear me better?
Yeah, we can hear you, can't see you.
You can't see me, okay. So now it's okay. So electrolyte, if depending on your activity. So if you are active every day and you're doing like a thirty minutes walking or forty five minutes walking, or you're not, you're standing on your feet for five, six hours, then if you did electrolyte every day, it's probably okay. You know, I usually say to do every other day.
How about, you know, the kids, you know, like my grandson runs, he's in a track.
Yeah, he should do it every day, like you can do it every day, yeah. But electrolyte means again, you choose, like it's not Gatorade every day, right? It's either you make lemonade at home and you give him or beet juice, people who are very athletic, if you give a little bit of beet juice, it gives them energy and it is, it lasts for a long time.
Oh.
Rather than these drinks which are added, you know, like some other sugars. So yeah, you know, if you make lemonade at home or something like that, or if they do electrolyte powder, but they're active, then it's okay. But it all depends on activity. If you're not active as much, like if you're not really like getting two hours of workout every day, then every other day of electrolytes, okay.
Kids can always drink orange juice and the regular juices too, right?
Right, yeah. Some of the parents don't like their kids to drink something that's right off the box. So that's why I just give that, but yeah, anything, you know, it's good for them because they'll get the vitamin C, they'll get, you know, all the other some part of electrolyte, they get the hydration, you can't get them to just drink water either sometimes, so it's good idea to add things. You know, I attended a conference that the Hopkins pediatrician put together and they said, you know, we take salt out of our system, a lot of us over the period of time, if you have high blood pressure, yes, you decrease the salt. But they actually suggested that put the salt on their fridge. So it's like they're saying you need that, you know, the salt is the bigger thing, the salt and sugar, if you balance it out. Not to too much sugar, but if you put salt and, you know, juices, other things that they're hydrating enough, it helps them.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Continue, Rupa, go ahead.
Okay, so basically I wanted to talk about stretching, nutrition and you know, mudra a lot. So I've kind of put together this much information to kind, you know, see if that benefits. If there is anything else you want me to talk about, Sita, I can.
What are the, the items to eat in day to day life? Like what do you, can you like suggest for breakfast, a lunch and dinner, any special menu they should, we should all follow?
Oh, so one other thing, I, you know, I found out that, you know, when you do breakfast, lot of the American breakfast, if you look at it, has a lot of sweet stuff in it, right? But if you look at all the things we grew up eating, it's more salty. You know, so some carbohydrate base. So protein is like recommended here, like everybody talks about protein and protein is good. But if you don't have enough carbohydrate, the complex carbohydrate in your system, then it actually you know, takes away from your body to use the protein for building your bones. So in the mornings, I mean, breakfast, if you are having something like rice flicks, like in a poha or something like that.
Yeah.
It's good, you know, anything of cream of wheat, you know, oatmeal, those things are good. And every day, make sure, one other thing also that do not eat same thing for five days. You know, and lately there are so many products in the market. So it's hard to really tell, because it might be five years after that you find out that, oh, this product was not really good. So the best thing to do is, and I heard this from a doctor actually, and that change your routine. Don't eat the same kind of food every day. So you know, if you're making breakfast, like, you know, a couple days you make the poha, then one day you make something with cream of wheat, one day you make something with oatmeal, things like that. So something little to energize yourself in the morning, that's very good. Somewhere I have read and I've tried to follow it, that if you want to eat fruit, you eat like around ten o'clock. And not very late at night because fruit has sugar and you would, you know, that kind of disturbs your sleep. So not after seven o'clock or something like that. So maybe you want to do like fruit and things like that in the morning part. And then when you have lunch, lunch, you know, everybody has different choices. But I would say that don't add too many different things together. You know, if you're eating something based like milk, then don't do yogurt based stuff together. So stuff like that, you know. So if you're eating rice, you know, some people eat brown rice, some people eat white rice and you know, whichever rice you're eating is fine. But then when you cook it, you make sure that, you know, that it's cooked and steamed for a little bit longer time. It's cooked in a slow method rather than very fast method. You know, have a little bit of water, then drain the water out, you know, these are the things, take time. Not everybody has that kind of time sometimes, but you know, it's good practice whenever you can think of it. Like if you're gonna eat beans or things like that, it's okay for about sixteen to eighteen hours. So that kind of takes the gassy element out of there. So then when you eat it, it doesn't affect you that much, you know, eating fenugreek, adding fenugreek in your cooking methods, like whatever you make is good. I have a patient that was having a lot of joint pain and he had a lot of inflammation. So all we did is that added, like whenever the mother cooked anything for him, you know, if she's making rice or if she's making any kind of vegetable for him, then she added the vegetable broth in. So what happened is it gave him enough electrolytes that helped, you know, like we always cook just with water most of the time, right? Like if you make dal or anything like that. But she started doing it and then then four to six weeks, we noticed a big difference, the joint pain. Nothing was changed, only thing that part of the diet was changed, you know, I was working with him, giving me exercise, things like that. But just by adding that, you know, so the broth again, that's the same thing. So in winter time, you know, if you eat a lot of clear soups, that helps like, you know, by Vietnamese soup, if you've ever had, anybody's ever had, that you know, it has a lot of liquid, filentrol, you know, it that really replenishes a lot of the electrolytes in your system. So not just the drinks in the summertime that I'm talking about, lemonade or other things. But if you have clear liquid soup, like vegetable broth, if you use vegetable stock to kind of make all your food, then that will help, you know, rebuild the electrolyte system and your body will digest it better.
Now, the, the, uh, what are the stuff, how do you illuminate some of the preservative stuff? Like you mentioned the vegetable broth, right? You use it. Then there is a lot of preservatives, you know.
Right, right. So you know, people who have time, they make it at home. It's probably a little easy in the morning, like, you know, it's like, and every day it's not possible for people. But what I say is, you know, we go out and eat, right? So we're gonna still put something that's probably not advisable for our body. But out of our, you know, seven days, fourteen meals, other than breakfast, if you consider just the basic lunch and dinner, fourteen meals. If there are at least five or six meals, if we can do something, like if weekend you have time, right? Then you just boil your water, you put some vegetables in it and you put in a little bit of salt or vinegar or things like that. Just have that broth ready and then just, you know, filter it and then have it ready to cook your stuff. So it doesn't have to be a completely vegetable broth that you buy out in the market, but something like that. You know, if you add that, that kind of will slowly builds your whole routine. And then you will like the taste of it and then you will end up doing it for a longer time. Other thing I noticed is when I buy products outside now, like, you know, I'm not, it's not like I'm promoting Trader Joe's. But if you look at Trader Joe's, like if you buy some things from Trader Joe's, you see they only have few ingredients. So when I go buy products, I look at how many ingredients are there. If there are a lot of these things, you know, inactive ingredients or if there are a lot of other things that are unnecessary, then I don't buy that product. So that's the only way, slowly you can, you know, kind of change your habits.
And what is, what is your opinion about gluten? These days, everybody talks, don't eat wheat, don't, you know, for arthritis. So at our age, we have a lot of issues with, you know, joints. So do you advise not to eat wheat because roti is our staple food?
I know, that's the hardest thing, right? So you know, the one thing they talk about, the gluten, you know, and it's kind of true when you have gluten sensitivity or if you're intolerant, you will notice that you have a lot of joint pain. But we like roti, so we don't want to take it out of our system and, you know, I will tell you from personal experience. I try to get multigrain, you know, flour. And I tried to make it and that gave me more problem because I think a couple of the things they had in the multiple, multi-grain did not work with my system well. Like the tapioca or something they have, it doesn't work with me. So the biggest thing I can say is if you have, you know, just have roti maybe once a day instead of, you know, twice a day. And that's probably fine.
You can also mix it with the other two attas, you know.
Right, right.
Badri, you can mix with jua, you can also mix it with ragi. I never use whole wheat by itself anymore.
No, right.
I just take a little bit of whole wheat and more of ragi and badri.
Right, and that's what I was, I have started doing, not buying the multigrain, but then when, what you're saying is exactly right. If you add little bit of wheat and then a little bit of other flour, like you know, um, one other thing is the juar and the badri.
Yeah.
Your system can handle it.
Yeah.
Badri is very hot for your system. So you know, you have to see if it works for you, usually this winter time is right.
Yeah.
But the juar is supposedly one of the good ingredients, you know, and the oat flour, you can kind of just grind it and make an oat flour and then add it in your, you know. So things like that and what I've tried, started to do is substitute, you know, instead of making roti, sometimes I just make those, you know, with the beans, you grind them and then you just make like little dosa kind of batter. And then, you know, it's in between childa and, you know, fudla and dosa. So you kind of mix and match and then add that and so I kind of change it up, but if you like roti, then it is a little bit hard.
It's the only satisfaction you get, two rotis and subji, I'm sorry, but otherwise you feel something weird.
One other thing you can do is you can find some wheat, like I have a friend who bought from Amazon a little grinder thing. It's very little, it sits on a kitchen counter and you grind your wheat at home, then you can avoid some of it. It's a lot of work, but you know, if you feel like it, the gluten really, like try to give it up for five days and if you feel that makes a difference in your pain, then that's worth looking into and changing it up. And you know, I think people still, the wheat that comes from other countries and not from US, you're probably still not allergic to it as much. So you just have to kind of experiment and find some flour that works better for you. And then just like Sita said, add some other things just to kind of have less content of that whole week in there.
Yeah, and I think the dosa sounds good too, make some dosa.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, once, once a week or maybe twice a week, we eat roti and we hardly use whole wheat flour now.
Whole wheat anymore, right.
There is a quinoa flour available too.
Right. Like people add almond flour to it, you know, so anything that works for you, just kind of add a little that way you're not having hole, but you get the satisfaction of eating a roti, so you know, that's probably gonna be very helpful.
The other thing is some people say, um, you shouldn't skip breakfast. Some say you, you need only two meals a day. So what should, you know?
So your question is that if you should follow the two meals or like eat three meals a day or things like that, is that what?
Yes, some people say you should not miss breakfast. And some say you don't have to eat for sixteen hours, give like sixteen hours gap before you eat anything. So where do we draw the line?
Right, right, so.
You're hungry, you eat.
Right, that's a very interesting point, you know, that nowadays I hear a lot of our friends are doing intermittent fasting. You know, so that's the sixteen hours that you don't eat anything and things like that. Um, in my opinion, what I say is that in India also, there used to be fasting thing, right? Like you do like one day whole, don't eat anything or have just one time meal or one time meal, but the other time no salt, but you can have chips. So you have different things, right? Like you, your body just needs every seven to ten days, a little bit of break. So if you're eating like the same meal, the heavy meal every day and things like that, then what you can do is one day, give yourself a little break. Eating breakfast is really good thing and eating carbohydrate in the morning is a good thing because it jumps starts your system. Again, you have to see if you are already waking up with feeling energized and you know, you'll have a little bit of coffee or tea and have just a toast with it and you feel good, then that's good. Then don't worry about, you know, trying to see that you have to eat breakfast every day. But if you feel energized and you don't need anything, you just do a cup of coffee and you can wait till twelve o'clock or one o'clock to eat your meal, that's fine too. But again, you have to see how you feel. The best way you can find out if something is working for you is how you feel. If you, if you skip a meal and you feel really tired, that means your blood glucose level went down and you needed a meal. And you skipped it and now your body has to figure out, find other sources to make up for it. So just pay attention to your energy level. You know, if you feel like, you know, you eat three meals and it gives you like really good balance, then that's fine. The quantity of the meal, you can probably reduce a little bit if you want to get some benefit of it. But any of this theory work and all of these are actually okay to follow and not okay to follow. But the best thing I can tell people is feel within yourself, what it makes you feel like. If your energy level is really low, your blood glucose level, when it goes down, then the body really, you know, cries for help and then uses all the other resources. Like at that time, the protein synthesis gets affected, you know, a lot of things happen. And it's not just one time, it's gonna happen, you know, if you, this becomes a pattern in your life, then it happens like that. You know, out of five days, if twice you missed a meal and you just felt a little tired and that's okay, that body's not gonna have any problem with that. There's no, you know, bad effect of it. But you know, the biggest thing I can say is just see how you feel. But every seven to ten days, if you give yourself one day of break, like half a day of break, like when you get up in the morning and don't eat till two o'clock. Or after three or four o'clock in the afternoon, don't eat anything until next morning. Any of that works for you, just try that out and see how you feel.
Okay, thank you.
When we studied here, when I studied here, basically, you know, I was told that breakfast is the most important meal. You know, and then like Ramdev Baba says, you eat everything heavy before four o'clock. And then once, don't, you know, start just light meal for the month, for the dinner.
It's like they say, eat the breakfast like a king.
Right.
Like this and supper like a poor man, so.
Exactly. And it actually has a lot of truth in it.
Very light so that, you know, it's easy to digest the whole. Very light so that, you know, it's easy to digest the whole, the whole night. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's basically what you can go by, you know, in the morning, everybody's up and about working, doing activities. At night, you don't, if you're not active, then, you know, your body doesn't digest well or, you know, sits there, it makes you sluggish. So that is a good, I know, thing to follow, that you eat good in the morning, you know, you know, four o'clock is also a good, you know, most of the people here do eat little early. But the, Americans breakfast thing, you know, they eat a lot of sugar, that's the wrong part. Eating breakfast is good, just not eat the donut in the morning.
Yeah, I think they eat a lot of heavy in their dinner, which is, then it's really becomes hard for them to digest, because there is not too much movement.
Too much movement, right.
Well, anyone else have any questions?
I was just wondering if, Rupa, you can, uh, recommend any exercise for the knee? In the sense like I have a problem like going up and down the stairs, not all the time, but at times it triggers. So is there anything that you would recommend?
So I think again, the part of some of the stretches you can do, but when you're sitting in the chair like you're sitting right now, right? Just bring your leg straight up.
Mm-hmm.
And then put your ankle, like, you know, bend your ankle towards you. So you'll feel a little stretched, do you feel a little stretched? And then go down and then put it down and then do the other side, okay? In sitting, just do like the ankle movements up and down like that, you know, the old sewing machine kind of concept. You just kind of do that to yourself. The calf is your biggest muscle pump. So if, if it gives good blood flow back to, you know, then it will help the lower leg. Um, it will not feel so tight and stuff like that. If the pain is, when you're going up and down, you're feeling it, that means some part of the muscle is weak too. So the stretch I said, right, like you would, you bring the leg straight up. So same way, just then don't do the stretch, but just bring the leg straight up and down five times, each side.
Okay.
Okay. So that will give that knee muscle a little bit of strength, okay? The other thing to do is you have steps in the house?
Yes.
So, and you have a rail on the side?
Yes.
Okay, so we hold one hand with the rail, then just put one leg over the first step and then come down, same leg. Just left leg five times up and down like that, but you hold the rail. You can hold two rails also, doesn't matter. But holding is important because then it helps transfer the weight, right? Okay. Because what you're doing is you're just going to glide those muscles, make them a little stronger. And then you do the other leg, the right leg. So one leg is on the floor and then the right leg five times up and down. Do that for about a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And see how you feel. You know, if that helps, then that probably will take care of a lot of the issues. Um, you can try heat or ice around your knee, like just at night, you know, if you wanna put heat or ice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other biggest thing again, you know, is at night, if you don't wanna put heat or ice, if you have big sweat or rub at home,
Yes.
Then just put it around your joint.
Ah, okay.
So it heats up the joint nicely, gets the blood flow moving. When you wake up in the morning, it's not as stiff.
I'm gonna try it out. Great.
Some of the little things, you can try it and try it for two weeks. If it doesn't work, then there is something else needs to be done. Then you may want to find like a physical therapist in your area or doctor in your area, just if you. But if it's like just a little pain, then you might be able to, you know, resolve it with this.
Wonderful. Thank you so much again.
I have one more quick question.
Yes.
You know, for sugar with diabetes who are pre-diabetic people, um, is it good to use stevia or sweet and low or splenda, which is the better product?
So one thing I will tell you that, uh, the sweet and low and, you know, the third thing, what did you say? Stevia is okay, but what was sweet and low and what is the? Yeah, so those two, your body doesn't digest well. So I would not recommend, that's just my opinion. And I have talked to a lot of people, like a lot of the wellness practitioners in the area, a lot of acupuncturists who do nutritional wellness. Um, and all of a sudden, that agreement that sweet and low splenda, your body doesn't do well. Stevia, so far, everybody thinks it's, you know, it's a pain product, it's okay, agave is okay. Yes. But do it in little bit of, you know, in winter time, if you can do honey, do honey. If, you know, have a problem with honey, don't, you know, they don't use it. But, um, raw sugar, if you can find to replace a little bit, like how much sugar are you talking about? Like?
I use like two, two, two and a half spoons a day.
Okay, so reduce that to one if you can. That's the only best advice I can give you. Or you can use stevia, I think that's okay, but don't go to sweet and low splenda.
The only thing I use is with coffee, that's all.
That's when you get it.
Um, you know, I don't go grab sweets or anything like donut, none, none of those things, but just coffee.
Right. So, you know, you, see, yeah, you can continue, I think that shouldn't be a problem. And then raw sugar or honey, you know what you can do, uh, that's fine. But reduce it to see if you can reduce a little bit in every coffee, you know, you put, like maybe put a three fourth spoon if you're putting one spoon or something like that, you know?
I will try that.
Yeah. What I've heard from a couple nutritionists is like, you know, they say about one spoon a day. So, but it's okay if you do one and a half or two, it will be okay, because you don't do anything else, so it's okay.
Right.
And you don't eat that much fruit, right? Then, do you eat fruits a lot?
I do eat that small bananas.
Okay, so that's the only thing, right. So you just have to make sure that the fruits have a lot of sugar too, like even if it's natural. If you are talking about pre-diabetic, then you just have to make sure, um, also adding salt on fruit sometimes helps metabolize the sugar.
I don't usually do it.
Right.
And then, you know, I, we don't eat white rice, we eat.
Yeah, so you're doing, so you're doing all the other things, so, yeah.
Yeah, red rice.
Yeah, so you're not really, you know, in all, all part of your life, you don't have, in all part of your diet, you don't have a lot of sugar in it. If you're doing other things to help it, then probably a little bit of sugar won't hurt. And the other thing to do is if you do this, that helps, uh, regulate the blood sugar. This actually helps diabetes, but you have to do at least forty-five minutes a day for thirty, forty days to regulate it. And you can start out with five minutes, three times a day, and then go to fifteen minutes, you know, slowly just build it up. But this is good and this is easy. So then you won't have to worry about too much sugar stuff.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right.
Do you have any suggestions for like a sciatic pain, like sometimes?
So if you only have it sometimes and if you don't have it all the time, then you can again do some stretches to lay on your back. So in the morning, when you're on your back, keep your feet together and then just bring them up and down. Keep them together and go side to side. Just you have to really make sure your knees are straight and your legs are, like your feet are touching. And then circle. So it's not about moving your ankle or knee or anything. When you do that, it stretches the whole sciatic complex on the back. Okay, so that's one of the good way to try to, you know, if every morning you do a little bit, you'll stretch it a little. And then eventually it will stretch out. Some days you've overworked or something like that, your back muscles are tight, you will feel sciatic effect, you know? So putting heat on your back sometimes when you're really tired or if you've had a busy day, or if you feel that sciatic pains coming, then try the heat at night. And that will probably help.
Thank you.
What's your opinion on, um, not, cannot eat spicy food after certain age? Uh, is it a gut problem? Is it, we can use probiotic? What's your opinion? So when you eat spicy food, um, you know, most of the time people can tolerate, but as you age, the lining of our gut becomes thinner. Right. And that's why we can't tolerate this spicy food. It's not really the, you know, at certain age you don't have to eat, but it's just because the lining and, um, we took my mother-in-law to a doctor and she said that you increase the vitamin B intake. And that helps you repair the lining and then your tolerance can go up. So it's not really the spicy food is not allowed, it's just that you have to see if your, you know, gut lining has to be repaired. So what kind of vitamin B? Vitamin B, like, you know, you can get vitamin B complex, you can get some drops that you can put it in your juice, you know? Okay. Even like putting cucumber in the water, right? That's vitamin B. And that adds slowly, it takes time to repair your gut. Yeah, it makes your body, yeah, alkaline, right. Right. Because what probiotic does, probiotic is good, but what probiotic does is it's really with the bacteria, you know, like the balance of it, right? But if your lining is already thin, then the spicy food is gonna react it more. Right. So that's the part, if you take care and, you know, that will help.
You can also eat a lot of beetroot.
Right. Beetroot, who? Beet is really good, powerful.
Beetroot has lots of vitamin B.
Right. So you boiled the beet and then?
Yeah, you boil the beet and then just eat it raw.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, you be, you know, if you add beet into your diet four, five times a day, that's really good. It's very highly energetic. Okay, right, sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Rupa, for giving us.
So much.
Thank you.
Is, is she in Maryland?
She's in Maryland.
I live in, yeah. Do you do? I live in Alhambria City. Therapy one-on-one, um, uh, anybody wants one-on-one with you or with? Yeah, I, I have a small, yeah, I have a small practice in Alhambria City. Uh-huh. So, um, and I do see just people one-on-one, you know, I've, that's how I individualize and that's why I kind of work with everybody, nutrition, mudra, yoga. So, you know, I go through the whole thing for forty-five minutes. Okay, so can we have your number and all info, I think, uh, so that we can contact you? Yeah, if I can share it with Sajal and then she can just pass it on, is that okay? Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sajal, and thank you, thank you, Rupa. Appreciate you guys so much. Thank you, thank you. And I know if, yeah, if you wanna look it up, my information is just my initials, rupaldave, RD Physical Therapy dot com. RD Physical Therapy dot com. RD Physical Therapy, yeah. It's just my initials, physicaltherapie.com. So you can look at my website and it has all my information too. Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You can forward that to us, um, Rupa, send it to me and then I'll forward it to them.
Sure.
But thank you so much for your time. We'll have more of your sessions with us later on, okay?
Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend. Yeah. Thank you, bye.
Namaste.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sajal.
Thank you, Sajal, bye.
You go out tomorrow in the morning.
Yeah.
All right.
Sajal.
Get up early.
Always. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sajal, for coordinating.
Sure.
Yeah, Kinwano Lot, uh, you can get it from Puddle, but there's also has it, H Mart has it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I get, I use that, I use almond, almond flour as well.
Ah, almond flour is, uh, I know, but I don't know if Kinwass flour is available.
Flour too, there's oat flour.
I make all oat flours in my home.
Yeah, so.
But I don't know if Kinwass flour is available, okay?
Yeah.
I, okay.
Try it.
Okay, I try. Okay, bye.
I'm tired, hungry, I need to go eat, bye.
Okay, bye. Bye, Sajal, bye.